This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined by Mr. William Piper, our second selectman, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bowemey. Thank you very much for joining us, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start by asking everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag that stands in the air, and to the reality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the unity of all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Item number two, any public comment to our agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting of October 3rd.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second that approval.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Item number four, I'll turn this over to Sally and Bill, resignations and appointments.
Sure, I'll do the first one. I'll make a motion for the appointment of John R. Whitcomb to North Hill Road to the Inland Wetlands Commission to fill the vacancy of Steve Nugent, term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Okay, we have...is there a motion to accept?
I moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, just for a point of illustration, Mr. Nugent has moved, and we thank him for his service to not only this particular commission, but to all of his service for what he's done for the Land Trust and for the Historical Society. Mr. Whitcomb has come forward, you see his resume in the packet, a very well-talented individual with a great background, and we think he would fit this bill very well, meaning "fit" the open slot for this commission. So, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Well, yes, I reviewed his resume as well, and I think his extensive experience as a civil engineer will serve the Inland Wetlands Commission well, so I support my motion, I guess.
Okay. All right, so, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, next.
Next resignation appointment is of James LaRusso, Jr., 93 Arrowdale Road, as an alternate on the Inland Wetlands Commission to fill the vacancy of Stephen Miller, term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Yeah, I will second this motion for an appointment.
Okay, and we also have James, his resume in the packet, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Sally?
Yeah, I had a question about the bond releases. There are six listed in the agenda. I only have data on five, and we have a November 6th, 2019 letter from Land Use, from Mr. Fredrickson, the Land Use Administrator, and he only references five. I do not have any data, nor do I see any reference on I-11-10.
I have that. I thought that that was in the packet, that packet of the bond information that was sent over to me today.
No, it didn't quite make mine.
So, I apologize.
Okay. No problem, no, this wasn't in here, but can I just take a second to look at it?
You certainly can.
Thank you. No, I just had that one, this one was just given to me. Okay, because the motion has the entire amount recommended for release, and it looks like it has it broken up. Has this taken place?
Can you see that for a second?
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay, this one, is this one that...what's the date of that one?
I believe this is the one that we have correct.
That's exactly right.
Okay, this is the...okay, I see this one. I've got it.
We'll post it.
No problem. All right, based on both of these and this second one, just can you just tell me the date of that one, if that's before the date of this one?
It's October 9th.
Okay, this is the 23rd, fine. Based on this data and a quick review, I will make a motion to approve the release of the bond I-11-10, Ridgewood Reserve LLC, 1405 1415 Hartford Turnpike, original bond amount of $15,000, release entire bond balance of $15,000 with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission, and I will make that motion based on this new data that I received.
I'll second that motion.
All right, just in discussion, just for the audience, what Sally was asking and what Val was explaining was that there was a language issue on a previous bond release that had to be changed, so the five bond releases you see here did not include that because it's already just been a language correction, so...
Right, yeah, I see that, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, with that being said, we have a motion, we have a second, and we've had discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay. Bill?
Next bond release is bond number P-15-30, 165 Washington Avenue, original bond amount $20,000, release the entire bond balance in the amount of $20,000 with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I'll make a motion to approve that bond release.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. And I will make a motion to regarding bond P-16-22, 409 Washington Avenue, original bond amount of $170,000, to release the entire bond balance in the amount of $170,000 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I will move that. This is the Amazon property, I did review the release information, bond release documents, there were some minor discrepancies between the approved site plan and the as-built, but they were minor changes, and in the opinion of the town attorney, there was no significant impact on the function of the approved plan, so with that noted, I would support and move for the release of this bond in its entirety.
Okay. I'll second that.
Motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, item number seven, I'd like to...
No, we have three more bonds.
Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Bill, it's your turn.
Next bond release is number P-17-13, 100 Universal Drive, the original bond amount was $2,500, release entire bond balance in the amount of $2,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll make a motion to approve that bond release.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
I will make a motion for the approval regarding bond P-96-22, 24 McDermott Road, original bond amount $2,500, release entire bond balance in the amount of $2,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will move the release of that bond.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. And then the last bond release that we have tonight is bond number P-17-05, 29 State Street, original bond amount $14,000, release the entire bond balance in the amount of $14,000 with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll make a motion to release that bond.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I will do item six.
Right ahead.
I will make a motion to accept the property tax refunds as listed in our agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it one more time. I'll second that Sally's motion.
All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, now, item number seven. So, I'd like to introduce a remarkable young lady who's here in our audience this evening, and would you stand up, Sidney, please? So, this remarkable young lady came to see me months ago, and she is working on a wonderful project, and part of her project was introducing a concept that we totally embrace here in North Haven, and the concept is Kindness Day. So, working with Sidney now these last couple of months, having her in my office with her mom who's here this evening, Sidney has come up with some thoughts and ideas as to what we can do in North Haven to continue to promote a kind approach with people throughout the community. And this concept that Sidney has come up with is really a concept that all of us, no matter where we live, no matter what communities we live in, or what state we live in, we really should look to really pay attention to some of the provocative thoughts that this young lady has come up with, that we, with Valerie's help here, have woven into a proclamation for you, Sidney, and hopefully this proclamation will help you in the pursuit of your goal, and you're more than welcome to come up and tell us about that, but before that, I would like to read this proclamation and then present the proclamation to you. So, if you'll bear with me, ladies and gentlemen. Kindness Day, the Town of North Haven, November 7th, 2019. The mission of Kindness Day is to create a kinder community by inspiring individuals towards greater humanity. In a world of social media, TV, computers, video games, cell phones, email, simple personal acts of kindness are becoming rare, rare rather than the norm. Common courtesy and kindness are being replaced by hurtful words, harsh words, and a lack of sensitivity and compassion. It is human nature to be influenced by kindness oftentimes, leading up to a desire to and want to pay it forward. By understanding the ripple effect of kindness and by promoting simple and kind acts in one's everyday life, the community will be happier and more considerate, in a much considerate place. Kind words and actions may seem so small, but their effects are truly endless and timeless. The Town of North Haven recognizes the importance of kindness among not only our community but worldwide. We thank Sidney Raskin for her efforts in promoting kindness, and beginning with today, we ask people to make an effort, to make things nice throughout their day, to be nice, and to incorporate random acts as simple as using kind words, holding the door for a person behind you, cooking a meal for someone in need, offering your seat to someone who may need it more than you, carry someone's bags, or, as Sidney says, volunteer your time. So, today here in North Haven, I, Michael J. Frida, do proclaim this Kindness Day. I urge all of our fellow citizens to join Sidney in helping to promote her wonderful and remarkable efforts in working towards making our town a community and making North Haven a kinder place. So, Sidney, I commend you, young lady, and we really appreciate you coming forward, and I'd like to have you step forward to present you this proclamation. This is for you, and I wish you the best in your project, and as I said to you before, if you need me to do anything else for you, I will do so. Would you like to say a few words, or...
Sure.
Okay, you can go right to that microphone.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Frida, for your kindness. I appreciate your support in recognizing November 7th as Kindness Day in North Haven. I hope that this will exhibit a positive effect in our town. I would also like to thank the Girl Scouts of Connecticut for inspiring me and making it possible to help our community become a better place, and I would like to thank my Girl Scout leader, Christine Amendola, for keeping our troop active, and my advisor, Dr. Roth, for guiding me through the gold award process. And through Kindness Day, it is my hope that we can make North Haven an even more kinder community and a more positive one as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sidney. You know, ladies and gentlemen, on a personal note, anytime a young person comes to see me, and I have a lot of young boys, girls, men and women that come and would like to talk to me and present to me some thoughts, concepts, and ideas, or merely to ask for advice, and these are the young men and women, the young boys and girls who are the future leaders of our respective communities, and I admire when the youth of America comes and looks for input, advice, offers suggestions on how to improve the community. And this is why Sidney and I connected right from the beginning, because I saw her genuine passion for this concept, a concept that sometimes in today's society is all too lacking. So, Sidney, once again, thank you very, very much. It's been a pleasure these last several months to be working with you. Thank you. Okay. All right, we will dispense with item number eight and move to item number nine. The next regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen is December 5th here at 7:00 PM at Memorial Town Hall. And ladies and gentlemen, we're at the point now of public comment.
I think it was good for you to skip your overview. Sidney's speech would have been tough to follow.
I agree. I agree.
Next one.
Now, Sidney, you have to keep us posted, okay, in terms of how you're progressing, all right? So, yes, Al, Al, how are you?
Good, yourself? Al Warren, Charles Court. First of all, congratulations on reelection.
Thank you.
Hope that it's not a trouble in the morning getting up and still looking at your opponent in the mirror. This starts with, there's been some articles in the paper about open space that you've been looking at.
Yes.
The towns have been looking at the purchase. I would like to speak about the open space that's where I am on Charles Court. The open space abuts my property from Hartford Turnpike, and also includes Sineways Pond. The open space, Sineways Pond, and along Hartford Turnpike. Sineways Pond is what I call the green swamp, okay? Every year before the fishing derby, water aeration system is installed, within two weeks after the system is blocked, the area is algae, it's loaded with algae, and leaving the pump running with very little water coming out of it, out of the outlets, it just continues to run. So, just unplug it. I mean, it's stupid to burn out the pump. The area back at the pond, which used to be a very good place for sled riding for the kids, had become a dumping ground, and it's now, it's just overgrown. Hartford Turnpike in the area behind my home, dead and fallen trees behind my home. I met with the Open Space Committee, we walked along Hartford Turnpike. Hartford Turnpike has become a dumping ground of brush and tree limbs from recent storms, and I'm talking limbs, big limbs. Public Works, I talked to Public Works, they went out there with the brush cutter, he says that this will take care of the problem, all it did was cut brush down and pile it on top of the dead limbs. The limbs are six to seven inches in diameter, and they did not come from the trees that are on that side of the road. They were brought across the road and dumped on the other side of the guardrail, okay? I had a dead tree that I was afraid of, and just on the edge of my property, Public Works was called, a private contractor to come out to remove the tree. They had a double, two double limbs, two double stumps, in other words, and he took down one and cut it up, left it there, the other side he cut down and just let it lie. The other thing is, in April this year, water started intruding into my property. I've been up there now over, since 1974, never had a problem, never. Grass had to be cut with a türmer because I couldn't use my lawnmower, I couldn't use the rider. My neighbor's yard, the same thing. Because of these muddy conditions, after walking, I started walking along Hartford Turnpike, and I noticed that the petunias curbing had been damaged by snow plowing. There's no petunia skirting from the top of Sineways all the way to the end of my property, where the property starts or where the Green Acres little stores are in there, all right? Water is now running off the roadway and into the open space. I had met and spoke with several town individuals, but to this day, nothing has been done. The individuals I spoke to were people from Open Space, they came out first. Second was the people from Public Works came out, they looked at it, and third, people from Open Space and the town engineer were out there about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and nothing's been done, and this has been since April.
Well, what is the expectation to be done, Al? Because, you know, I'm not even sure, you've mentioned a lot here, okay?
Yeah.
So, if a tree's in the town 10 foot right away, then it's our responsibility to take it down if it's dying or defective.
Right.
But if a tree's in a backyard in some open area, the town doesn't go into those areas because we...
It's open space.
So, do we own it as open space, though?
Yeah, it's open, it's your open space.
So, in back of Charles Court, you're saying that that's open space the town owns?
Yes.
All right, so, you know, I'd have to take a look at that. That's an awfully arduous process to start going in these backyards.
I understand, years ago, now there's swales, there's swales in there, okay, which was put in there when the, when the, there used to be grapevines up in the back, that's when it was a farm. They used to, the town used to come out and clean out the swales with a tractor or with a bulldozer. They stopped, the Public Works now says, "We don't do that."
Well, let me explain that, okay? We will clean out swales if there's easements that the town has. We do not clean out swales, this is going back way before I took office. Things have changed, Al, 15, 20 years ago. The town did a lot 25 or 30 years ago that it doesn't do anymore. We have over 3,800 homes with brooks and swales in their backyards, so it's a liability to put, to put public employees on private property. Years ago when it was changed, long before I took office, driveways were being torn up with backhoes going in, people wanted the town to pay the driveways. There were situations where lawns were torn up, septic systems, leaching fields, so the town years and years ago stopped that. Now, what we do do is if, because you mentioned this a few moments ago, if a plow breaks a curb for, while during the snowstorms, then we will, we will re-curb that, but what the town doesn't do is curb every street in the Town of North Haven.
Right.
There's 194 miles worth of roadways here.
I know, I understand that, so, but if it was petunia's curb there before, I never had a problem, right? And I never had a problem with people coming, walking across the street and dumping their stuff into the open space, which I have to look out of my window and see.
But is the curb, a curb that was broken by the plow?
It had to be. What else could have taken it out?
So, then the procedure is when that happens, the Public Works has to be called, the curb has been destroyed by the plow, they put a work order in. Now, they don't repair it during the winter while they're still plowing, in the spring we have lists of curbs that were broken by plows, and in the spring, the town replaces the curbs.
Right. And I just, the people were out there and met with me in April and May, and to this day, nothing was done.
So, is that on the cul-de-sac at Charles, is that what you're saying?
No, no, up and back, Hartford Turnpike.
All right. So, Val...
So, the water is just running down, now it just runs off the roadway and comes toward our house.
All right, so that's something maybe we can solve, if the plow tore it up. So, Val, we'll make a note of that, all right?
Yep.
So, is that the biggest area of the problem right now, Al, that water runoff?
It's the water runoff, yeah.
All right, so we'll take a look at that.
You know, if you want, you want to come out?
Well, I live in that area, so I'm very, I drive by there, you know, every night, so I can take a look, so, but I can't make a commitment here...
And I got to give the police department, they came out after I spoke with Open Space, one of the girls that's on the Open Space Committee is working in planning and zoning, she got in touch with the police department, and they come out and put three no dumping signs up, okay? But they're still throwing stuff in there.
Okay. Do you know who's throwing stuff?
In fact, your sign from the election four years ago is laying up there.
It's still there? Is it buried in the debris or...
Yeah, it's buried in the debris.
So, do you, do you see who's doing this?
Oh, it's the people that live up in the back. They would throw their brush across the street, there's a pile of brush this high.
All right, and you've talked to the police about this?
Talked to the police about it?
Yes, have you?
No, not to the police.
Well, that's what you really...
Well, you got to catch them, that's the thing.
But if you know that it's those people in back of you, the police can knock on the door and say that we understand you're dumping illegally in the back, so that's the procedure, talking to the police on that.
Right.
So, but are you sure it's them? Because you seem hesitant.
Oh, I've seen them, yeah.
Okay, so you've seen them?
Yeah.
Oh, so then, police should have been called, or at the very least, a zoning officer should be called, and then that's a zoning violation potentially, so that's the procedure, Al.
But since the signs have been put up, you know, some of it is stopped, but where the signs stop, and then it continues again down toward Green Acres there, it's, the people are dumping their grass stuff in.
So, it's the people up in the back of you on Hartford Turnpike?
That's right. And you could go over there and look at, and stand at the guardrail, and look up, and none of the trees have broken limbs, right? This stuff was dragged across the street and thrown over the guardrail, and now I look out the window, and in the summertime, it's fine because everything's overgrown, but now with everything down, now you got to look at this piles of brush and stuff up there.
All right, okay. Well, would you want, you going to call the police or zoning officer, or you want us to have the zoning officer take a look at it?
I don't care, I'll meet with anybody to take a look at it, but I'm just worried about the water intrusion, intruding on the property.
But that's the curb issue, though, right?
Yeah, I think that's what it is, yeah.
So, because we're blending some issues here altogether, so I'm trying to break the issues down systematically.
Right.
The curb, we'll make a note of that, Al, okay? So, we could take a look at that. If the plow broke the curb, we probably can help with that. But we certainly can't start accusing people of doing something, but you seem to be convinced that they are doing it, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, but in the future, if you see it, you have to report it.
Okay.
That's the procedure, okay? And, you know, you worked in municipal government, so you do know.
I hate to be the bad guy for these people, I mean, the people don't know, you know, that they're not supposed to do this, you know? To walk across the street, somebody's street, and just throw their stuff over there.
So, where the Green Acres Plaza was, where Mostly Meats used to be, it's that group of houses over there, you're saying?
Right, going, going south, yeah.
All right, okay. Okay, well, I think the thing that we can take, you know, we can probably make a more immediate impact is on the curb right now.
Yeah.
All right, and so we made a note of that, right, Val?
I did, like...
Okay.
Anytime somebody wants, I'd be willing to walk with them up there, you know, and show them the problem, you know.
Were they out, you said we had people out there, right? Did you have, you had the engineer out, you said, right?
The engineer was out there with me three weeks ago, yeah.
All right.
He was out there, and he looked at it, and he sort of, the curbing is just, it's got to be at least 10 feet off the roadway, some of it, so that was, you know, really thrown back.
Okay, all right. Val, we made a note of that, right?
Yes, I did.
All right.
Okay, but Val, if somebody wants to meet, just give me a call, and I'll meet with them up there.
All right. It's good seeing you, I haven't seen you in a while.
I've been recuperating.
Okay, good seeing you, Al, take care. All right. Thank you. All right. All right, seeing no other, oh, Mary White, okay.
Mary White Summerlane, I would like to ask residents, particularly those who live in Montaukise, to please attend the Planning and Zoning meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, it's this Tuesday, coming up at 7:00 at the library in the community meeting room.